We'll call this meeting to order. Would you join with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, can you hear us okay?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, so would you please do roll?
Absolutely. Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
President.
John Glondo.
Here.
Ruston Weaver. Is absent.
Ruston's absent.
Stephen Harper.
President.
Mickey Holtz.
Here.
Beth Williams.
Here.
Ken Ratliff.
Here.
Okay, I don't think we really need to make an excuse for Ruston, he is in Ohio. But uh, this would have been his probably last.
Yeah, I would just for for out of you, I would move that we excuse Ruston Weaver's absence by a statement.
He didn't move the second to authorize Ruston Weaver's absence, all those in favor with I?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, if he did, tell him.
Stephen Harper not in the room.
What was that?
You heard your name mother.
Okay, well, I don't know what that was. Okay, approval of meeting agenda.
Move that we approve the meeting agenda.
I think to approve the meeting agenda as the Senate. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with I?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is accepted. Well, tonight there are a few announcements. The fire department had their elections. And Ed Mills was elected fire chief again. The assistant chief, first assistant chief is Nate Henderson, he was elected again. Second chief, second chief, assistant chief is Casey Ordon, Ordo.
Ordo.
Or or Ordo. Yes, I even, okay, and then. Or, yes, Ordo. And then the secretary treasurer is Cole Lowenstein. So they are in place. And Ed is the fire chief administrator, that's a second job. And he's full time now. So I'm going to accept that appointment. Now those.
Just to be, just to be clear.
Yes.
Does that require council action to authorize mayor to appoint them?
I don't think so.
I thought it did.
My understanding is, so while they, while they give their recommendation and it is a somewhat democratic vote within the fire association.
The fire association does not appoint their own officers, they recommend them, and typically we take the recommendations
and then we authorize the mayor to.
Well, okay, that's fine, but I think that there's only few and by ordinance that have to be approved, but that's fine with me. You guys want to.
I move that we authorize the mayor to appoint the set officers as right. Let's take a second.
Second.
Move the second, authorize mayor to point, the individuals just read for the fire department.
Staff position on the city that goes through a city council approval process.
Well, I know for sure city administrator is clerk, clerk.
Okay.
For sure. And but I'm not that familiar with the ordinance. But here and there, questions on the motion? All those in favor with I?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? It's the fire chief and we have two assistants and a secretary. Okay, now the other appointment that I'm going to make tonight is for the planning commission. And we have an application here from Elizabeth Kurtz in the back there. And you can just wave from back there, it's okay. And she's willing and able and ready to go for the planning commission. So, and I don't know if that needs to be approved by the council or not.
It does, and I will make the motion that we approve Elizabeth Kurtz when I would second the commission.
To move the second to accept Elizabeth Kurtz's appointment to the planning commission. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with I?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, you're on.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure, yes. Okay, well, we're moving along as far as city leaders. Let's see now. That's it for announcements. And now we're at the consent agenda, do I have?
Move that we approve.
I said two questions on the consent agenda before we did that.
Okay.
I can. First one, small edit from our last rego. Ruston's name is spelled incorrectly in the lodging committee item at the very end. And also Greg Dorn's listed as the city planner, and I realize it's a sort of minor thing, but for history's sake, we might want to make a correction to say he's the contract planner or whatever.
For sure, yes.
I have another correction.
Okay.
It shows me as attending the meeting and I was not there.
That's a big one.
Kathy is gonna.
Well, you weren't on your line, Governor Elliott.
I was, I was here for the study session. I was working for the previous one.
Okay, okay, you almost got credit.
I know. But I was reading the minutes going, I don't remember.
Okay, those are noted, I know that Kathy can hear specifically well, and those will be corrected.
The other question I have is, can you tell me about the fire department stipend payroll vouchers, I just don't know what that is?
Oh, well, actually, they keep track of the times that they, on calls that they get, and there's, I don't know exactly how much they get per call, but they get a small stipend for going out on different calls, and there's a, well, you'd have, it's, I don't know, it's here somewhere.
I mean, I saw, I saw the voucher list, I just didn't know.
Yeah, oh yeah.
How we did that or what, so that's great, I didn't know that.
Oh yeah.
They also get a little stipend for attending trainings also.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
And then also, if they put in enough years, they get a minimal, a kind of a minimal, you know, pension.
Oh wow, okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
So, and there, and I forget how many years, but there's quite a few of those that do actually get that. Okay, any other questions on the consent agenda?
I would move that we pass it as amended.
Make a second.
Move the second to accept the consent agenda as amended. That's the city clerk for remembering those things. All those in favor with I?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda, city. So now we'll go down to officer reports, and the first person we'll hear from is Rob Olman, our city administrator.
All right, thank you, honorable mayor and city council. I've got a building department report, remember, this is just for November and the year-to-date. I'll give you a more comprehensive one in January for the entire year. But for November, there were six permits issued, which for a total year-to-date is seventy-eight, and which brought in nearly eighty-five thousand dollars. Moving on, City Hall has been busy, as you can see in the new business, there's quite a bit of little, little work to do there. Reviewing contracts, updating job descriptions, and reviewing some rate increases, unfortunately, and then the urine reports we've been busy reviewing here. I've also, I am part of the budget committee for Kitcom, so they, they had, they had a budget amendment come up, so we actually met, and then at our regular meeting, wasn't too much to do, but that's our last meeting of the year, was last Thursday. With that, that's all my report.
Two questions. Rob, one, I've been hearing, maybe this is better for Chief Land, I don't know, but I've heard from multiple people now that South Cleellam is likely to go with the county for services?
Not likely, they are.
Right, so, we, we, I did get a letter from them saying that they're initiating the ninety-day to end their contract in their, in the police and animal control contract. So that will be ninety days from when we got it, would be some, putting it somewhere in middle of February.
So not that it's a huge hit, but I guess left them in the budget then.
It is a, it is a large consideration.
Okay.
Yes, and I think that is Kirk, Kirk's on, Kirk's, he'll be able to fill in a little better about that.
Great, and the second question is, are we, have we made any progress on replacing the city planner?
Yes, the, the job description, all that is just about complete, and we'll be looking to hire one, for sure, so we have one in hand.
We just talked about that actually today at our staff meeting, and the job description is, is getting close to being done. We, and then definitely go out first of the year for a, for an opening.
Great. Thank you. We're even on a note, figuring out how we'll rearrange offices.
Yeah.
Most likely, the planner will get Rob's office, and he and I will move into another space in the middle part. Planner needs.
In the closet.
That we don't have a sticker in the closet.
Yeah.
That corner, I mean, I just.
Got it, yeah.
Right, so we're working on that also to be ready for that.
Great.
Well, it's important, you know, that a person have a good workspace that has to do those kind of things, so, okay. Any other questions for Rob? Okay, next we'll hear from our contract planner, Greg Dorn.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
To provide an update on the Bullfrog Flats slash forty-seven degrees north project and, and two recent developments that the, the mayor has shared information with, with the city council on recently. The first has to do with the status of the proposed modifications to the master site plan. And near the end of the month of November, we received a letter from Sun Communities confirming what they had previously communicated to us, which is that they are, in fact, reviewing all of the comments they received in response to the notice of application. They're considering all of them, and they have indicated that they are in the process of making revisions to their development plans based on those comments. In addition, they, they advised us that they would, as they continue to refine those plans, that they would be actively or more actively engaging members of the community in their planning process. And as a result, they were anticipating submitting revised development plans in perhaps winter or spring of twenty-twenty-two. That led to a difference between the city and Sun Communities. And it was subsequently agreed that Sun Community withdraw application that they submitted last summer for the proposed modifications. And as they continue with the revision slash refinement process, they will submit a new application that includes their revised plans when they're ready to do so. The development agreement provides that there is no timeframe for the review of application materials, and specifically states that the project can sponsor, can proceed at their own schedule or under their own schedule, so the withdrawal of the application, I think, kind of cleared the path so that they can continue with the consultation process, the revisions, and submit a new application with whatever modifications they might be proposing when they're ready to do so. So that was kind of the first step, confirmation of what they had, had previously indicated and outlined how they would proceed. And perhaps the most noteworthy part of that would be the formal withdrawal of the application and return of their application. So as we proceed in the future, there will be a, a new application that will outline the, the proposed modifications that they have under consideration, so that's the first step. Followed shortly thereafter, and it includes some surprising information. And in that second communication, we were advised by New Sun Cadia and Sun Communities that the proceeding with Sun sale agreement of the property. We had known for, for quite some time that Sun Communities had an option to acquire much, but not all of the property that's subject to the development agreement. And we had, we received notice that they were, in fact, going to proceed with the purchase and sale agreement, and, and it was proceeding rapidly. What came as a surprise was the, to learn that Sun Communities is purchasing not only the land that they originally had under option, but they are also purchasing the other parcels that New Sun Cadia was going to retain, that are also covered by the development agreement. The, perhaps the most significant of those parcels is the land associated with the business park. And there is, was a large area in the very middle of the development adjacent to the horse park that was designated as open space. And it is our understanding that Sun Communities is acquiring both of those properties as well as a couple of buffer strips, one along I ninety and one along Bullfrog Road. So when, as our understanding is that Sun Communities is about to, if not already, be the owner of all the property that's subject to the development agreement. That was something that we hadn't anticipated, but I could see a number of potential benefits to that, particularly from the standpoint of it turns the development of the property to one developer as opposed to two, and will simplify the consultation process that the, that the city is going through. And I think we'll make our analysis simpler and more clear-cut as well, because in the past, we would have Sun Communities communicate information, then New Sun Cadia communicate information, and then Sun Communities, New Sun Cadia, and we were going back and forth, and particularly for things like analyzing the traffic impacts, that was very challenged. Two different sets of development assumptions, one for the, the land to be developed by Sun Communities, and the other for the business park to be developed by Sun, Sun Cadia. So this, the purchase and sale agreement now would enable the city to proceed with one party, Sun Communities, as we review and evaluate the, the, the development plans for compliance in the future. The process now, there are some steps that require city action now that we've been advised of the intent to execute the, the purchase and sale agreement. This, according to the development agreement, the city does not approve the sale per se, but what the city has an obligation to do is, upon request, to review and consent to the transfer of the responsibilities under the development agreement from the, the, the owner, New Sun Cadia, the new owner. There is a process outlined in the development agreement for the city to do this. And some of you may recall that this past summer, that New Sun Cadia took on a develop, new development partner in the ownership and operation of the resort across the street in the unincorporated county. And the county commissioners went through a process of reviewing and providing their consent to the transfer of responsibilities from the old partner to the new partner for the resort area. And so this is a similar situation now where the city must review and consent to the transfer of responsibilities under the development agreement as they currently exist now. And that is separate from any proposals that may be submitted in the future to modify the agreement. This is simply to transfer the rights, which is the development rights, the responsibilities and the obligations that Sun Cadia has had to, to Sun Communities as the new owner. Perhaps one of the ones that might be the most significant or noteworthy would be the council you had approved last year at this time, a, an agreement with Sun Cadia to execute the transfer of the twelve acres from Sun Cadia to the city and to secure a commitment to make three payments to the city to support the development of that twelve acres as a community recreation. The. As for the first payment was received in twenty-twenty-one, and the city is, is scheduled to receive the second payment no later than December thirty-first of this year, a payment of one point six million dollars. And then the third payment, which is due no later than twenty, the year twenty-twenty-eight. We were concerned that in all the activities that were going on, and the purchase and the sale, and all those kind of things that the, that the one point six million dollar payment might get lost in the shuffle. And we are pleased to report that both parties have confirmed that Sun Communities, as the new owner, will be making the one point six million dollar payment to the city before the end of the year, so they are assuming the responsibilities that Sun Community, Sun Cadia had assumed with the execution of the promissory note last year for the one point six million, and they will be assuming the responsibilities for the third and final payment, the two million dollars that is also secured by a promissory note. And they've already started the, the paperwork on the assignment of the promissory note, which will be subject to review by the city attorney to make sure that the city is, does in fact have a secure commitment to receive that third and final payment. So that's a, a long way of saying that we are now at a point where at the staff level, we've started to review transfer request and the consent. One of the steps that's required by the development agreement is for the city to consult with public agencies that may benefit from the development agreement as it is written. So we have identified and prepared a list of, of those agencies, some of the obvious ones, like the school district, hospital district, Kitcom would be another, town of South Cleellam and, and Roslin, and certainly the county, among others, will all be receiving a letter like the city did this past summer, asking if they have any comments on the transfer request. Council, we are looking to the first meeting in January, which is, oh, I need to confirm, let's see, that is January tenth, Monday, January tenth, as a time for, for you to consider the transfer request. We will have the responses from all the agencies we've consulted with and the staff analysis available for you at that time. And by, in accordance with the provisions of the development agreement, that falls within the forty-five days that the city has to, 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 to review and, and, and consent to the, the transfer. So that's where we are in the process. And as I said, the next step will be for, for letters to go out in this week to the other agencies that, that might be affected by this. And if you have any questions, certainly do the, the best tonight, otherwise, we'll keep you informed as we proceed. And like I said, we'll make sure that you have a, a full packet of information as we approach the, your next meeting on January tenth.
So could I, can I make a comment? Just go ahead to the report. So it's disconcerting to hear statements like, we hope it doesn't get lost in the shuffle when we're speaking about one point four million dollars, that an entity is contractually agreed and signed a promissory note to do, there would be no reason that something like that would get chopped, lost in the shuffle, rather than us making sure that they fulfill that contractual agreement. I'm not comfortable with coming at the last midnight hour, a second meeting, or the first meeting in January, which is like, we have, when we have seconds basically to decide. We've sent out these letters, I don't think we should be considering this at the last meeting for sure. And if we need to hold emergency meetings until everything's ironed out and all of the city's interests are protected, we have to, with this whole, the whole idea of let's review this sometime in the fuzzy future is not, I don't, I don't think. Hopefully, that's not what you're proposing, but it seems to be what, what's happening, so. Yeah, action needs to be taken much sooner and prudent review that all the obligations that, that Sun Cadia needs to fulfill before a transfer agreement. I believe that we're, that we're very widely construing the idea that the new entity just de facto takes over the responsibilities just because we require it, and just because we have stated in the developer agreement with it. We need to make sure that there is some, some clear acknowledgements from acquiring, and not just simply attach it, oh, this entity is replacing this entity. So we need to do a deep dive, we need to make sure that nothing's getting lost in the crack, certainly. Certainly contacting the other interesting, interested agencies, I believe, is a good first step. But as soon as we start receiving responses, when you say the city approves this, ultimately what you're saying is the council, after review of staff and after whatever, approves this. So to simply say, the tenth, that's too far off, I, I'd like to, if you could propose a date where you think that we could review this sooner, before the end of the year, it would be all ears.
Oh, but I, I appreciate your comments, and, and it was a year ago at this time, when we, I think, scheduled one or more special meetings at, at your request, and I think that makes a lot of sense under the circumstances that either the end of this year or prior to that tenth meeting, to have more than one meeting and discussion on, on the subject, I think is very appropriate, and we'll, we'll work with you on that in the holiday schedule to find some times to, to make sure that, that, that that can happen.
When do you anticipate a response from the entities?
You know, I, I don't know, we need to get the letter out this week, and, 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 you know, like, like so many things, there's, there's a, a lot that happens at the end of the year between finalizing budgets. between finalizing budgets, finishing up work and wanting to spend, you know, time with family, friends and loved ones in the holidays. But I think this is a a matter that's important enough to most, if not all, that I I think that I we can expect probably, you know, prompt responses. It may be first week of January, but I would think that one way or another, we should be able to have more than one opportunity for for counsel for you to review and all the comments and thoroughly discuss the 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 tran- transfer and also to discuss with the city attorney what the different documents are and and how they bind the parties to the the various obligations. All that's very appropriate.
So when does the 45 day clock begin?
It started on, I believe, the seventh, which also brings up a good point is, I think, if I remember correctly, the 45 days takes us out to about January 21st. So there's also some time after the meeting on the 10th as well to
interrupt you, but for councilmatic action, no, we need to have, we need to have this ironed out much before the 10th. And so I would propose, we got Christmas is on the 25th, which is a Saturday, there's, you know, the 26th, 27th, 28th. And so I don't think it'd be unreasonable to consider if we have information, at least to have something before us, the 29th, 30th, which leaves us outside of New Year's and then the possible considerations on the 30th.
This is of such magnitude that we cannot just kick the can down the road. My my concern is for feedback, if we get the letter out the end of this week, we're into almost Christmas time, right? Are we going to get response like, is, are the South Cleelam Town Council, the Rosin City Council going to be able to get together and give a response? No, they're not. Like, this timing is terrible to have that window over the holidays. And I think we need to ask them, we need to, yeah, this is, this is not ideal timing.
And I, I mean, I hate, I hate to even think this type of a thought, but it would appear that
I wasn't gonna say this is almost by design. Yeah, I wasn't gonna say it, but it seems, it seems curious. I think we need to ask them for more time.
We'll, we'll, we'll be able to spend the time. We you guys, we're not gonna, you're not gonna just get sprung. It's not gonna get sprung on you where you have to do it one meeting. I'm, I'm saying it won't, I'm saying you won't be required to make it the decision in one meeting is what I'm saying. So there'll be time to look at this stuff and figure out what, you know, what there is, you know, what kind of information we get, what we get. We'll work on that. Don't worry. We're not gonna just like blindside the council.
Yeah, certainly understand that the council has no problems meeting between now and the first.
We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get some information together. We'll, you guys will be appraised. They'll have plenty of time to look at everything and study.
Mayor, I'll, I'll maybe coordinate with the the city clerk and we'll, after the meeting or tomorrow, we'll do a kind of a quick poll of the council to find out schedules. And we'll see if we can come up with two or three possible dates to to get out there and get on on calendars so that we can can proceed according to a a a a more extensive schedule.
Proposing that we cram all this into the Christmas holidays is
Very difficult.
I mean, we have one council member saying, yeah, we can do it no problem. But I haven't heard the rest of the council. In addition, brand new and no, that's not enough time. Not enough time, not enough, bad timing. It it's timing that speaks of shenanigans.
My, I would, I would counter though to consider this. Legal counsel does not appear to believe that it's inappropriate timing and they haven't given us license. At least it would appear, we don't see any direction that we can hold up the transfer.
In in that case, fine. But our public involvement will be non-existent over Christmas. And that's all.
You speak. I mean, is there anybody other council members that want to speak?
Well, my memory of when this was proposed was different. We had that 1.6 million payment. And we were talking about the additional payments coming. And I think if we go back and listen to the recording of that meeting, my memory tells me that it was said in that meeting, don't worry about it. Because San Cadia is, at that time, they sense being sold. And it will be debt free when it's transferred into its new owners. So probably before the end of the year, you'll receive the rest of the monies. And but the one thing that was said is that it would be taken over and paid off before it was transferred names. Don't have to worry about it. And I think at that time, we we went ahead and didn't question the other two things, particularly because we were covered. And I think if you read, my memory tells me, we've got to read that transcript and see what Beck really said to us. Because I don't remember at all that they had the authority. They didn't even bring it up. They said themselves, we will not transfer it onto the new owners. We will be paying it off because we will be debt free when we do this. But I think that transfer has to be studied to see what was said. And I think there's a couple of things in there that we didn't agree to. And that is why we recorded everything. That's my thought.
I think we just need to request an extent, sorry. Didn't wait to get. I think we need to pursue getting an extension along with trying to get some meetings set up also.
Certainly, we can certainly explore that.
By the time we get any feedback from the interested parties, we're gonna be in the first of the year. They're all gonna be gone or not, not at the office like they normally would be for the holidays. So we're not gonna get anything to even meet on until after the first of the year.
I see Alex's face on screen.
Kind of a comment to Beth. We can certainly ask for an extension, but I I do think we need to be prepared to have a response by January, January 20th is the 45 day. So we can discuss with San Cadia's representatives, but let's be prepared for January 20th deadline because by contract, that is what the city has agreed to.
So what deadline are we giving the other parties to get back to us by? Because I think that will inform our calendar.
I think Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but you could, you know, ask the affected entity. Yeah. We need a rush answer or they're not gonna get their their comments in. And it's really on them to get us comments back ASAP.
I I think in light of this discussion, a a a thought that we had just becomes even more important. It's not just simply a matter of of sending a letter to each of those agencies, but to to contact them directly and and explain the situation and the timing of it and 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 then have discussions with them to find out what is gonna be a a likely frame for each of them to 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 respond. So I think it's something that rises to a a higher level than just sending a letter and asking for a response. I think it's gonna require, you know, personal contact and interaction with each of those agencies. And I think we can give the council a report back as we do that. Either, you know, by, you know, directly from the mayor or or through an updated status report or some way during the holidays of keeping each of you informed as to how it looks like things are gonna proceed.
I have a quick question for Alex. So 45 days, the the number that's been thrown around, that's how long that we have to respond? Have to issue either an approval or a denial of our authorization for their sale?
Uh, the terminology, and I'll have to pull it up, I believe is respond. So we could, we could look in, let me look into how we might be able to craft that.
I guess my question is, do they close when they have clothes? Or they authorize that to happen pursuant to reasonable term terms?
That's a great clarification. They can are free to sell the property. So closing either happened late last week or this week. I've asked for an update from their attorney. The closing of the sale is separate than what the city is looking at, which is a transfer of the responsibilities and obligations. So even if, let's say it did close on Friday, San Katie, excuse me, Sun owns the property, San Cadia is still on the hook until the city provides consent.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So the the trigger, let's get back to that trigger date. And that was came from the letter we got from them that notified us. Is that right, Greg?
Yes. And it's, and yeah, and it's spelled out in in the the development agreement. And I think Alex, the city attorney's comments were that, you know, we can request more time and we can certainly schedule more meetings. We just want to make sure that the city fulfills any obligation under the development agreement. Because it does say that if if the city doesn't respond within 45 days, the request is deemed to be approved. And so we don't want it to be approved by default. And that's why we were working within those timeframes. But I think we can certain, under the circumstances and the holidays, it seems like it would be additional time.
Okay.
I agree.
Yes. You guys will have plenty of time. We'll make sure to review this thing. It's not gonna be like at one meeting and then you gotta decide.
So I used to be on this council. I know exactly what it's like. I I don't think my fear is having to adjudicate it in one meeting. I think my fear is not having, you know, basically going through a certain portion of it and then having staff provide their input. And then basically having a whole reconsideration of something we haven't reconsidered before rather than, you know, considering it and then finishing, considering a matter. We get new things introduced in the next draft form, et cetera. That's more my concern. And it's not, I'm not, it's not a fault of staff. It's just a consequence what happens in these type of proceedings. And so I'd like all of that homework to be done so that we have a finished product to consider or something that we can amend versus having to go back and forth.
Yes, especially with a newly constituted body halfway through, which only complicates it more.
Yeah, okay. Good points. Good points.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments.
All right. That's it for the planner then. Okay. Thank you, Greg, for that. Next, we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Mike Engelhardt. Are you there, Mike?
I am. Honorable Mayor, Council. I'll make mine quick tonight. Just wanted to inform the council that we did have a sewer main collapse right underneath First Street at the Billings intersection. So we've been working with HLA, getting some elevations, trying to come up with a long term fix. We think we have at this point, we're waiting on some quotes from an emergency contractor to get in there and get it repaired. Been working with most of the day today. And to have some numbers by tomorrow. But since the council meeting is today, Rob will be working with you a little bit later to get a budget amendment on Robin's behalf so that we can proceed with getting that main replaced. So but that's all I got for this meeting.
Hey, so just so the council knows, there is a pipe that goes across First Street at Billings and First and it's, and it gets beat on, it's not very deep. And it goes that, that liquid goes north and then goes down an alley and we're looking at looking at a, to go south. More downhill. So that's we worked on. Meanwhile, the crew is keeping the manhole and the thing pumped out.
And to actually, Jay, to be honest with you, after our meeting this morning, we got clarification from Ben after they did all of the numbers, the engineers. And actually, the only way that this is really gonna work for us to have a long term fix is to run it back across First Street all the way to Second Street, where that manhole and trunk main is deep enough for us to get enough fall to make it a long term fix and not another long term problem.
Okay. And then speaking of speaking of the sewer main on Second, you've assured me that that little divot between the two manholes between Stafford and, oh, the next street pine is is not a sewer problem.
At this point, with all the signs that we've seen without having the ability to get up there I mean, gravel or any signs of tile pipe or any other pipe showing itself downstream. And that's been going on for quite a while and there's no long term effects from any possible collapse in that sits in that location.
All right. There, there, people wanted to know about that. Thank you, Mike. Okay, that's it for Mike. Next, we'll go to our Police Chief, Kirk Bland.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Just a quick stat update, we're up to 4,092 calls for the year. And the good news is we are finally able to offer a job to replace Officer Scott Iran, who retired earlier this year. The job offer was made to Mr. Matt Anderson. He'll be coming to us from Colorado. And we hope to have him here by the end of the month. So his start date would be January 1 of 2022.
Man, I see Beth has a question. Go ahead.
Is she, is he a lateral or are we gonna have to send the training or?
He's a lateral, but things he went to an out of state academy. He has to go to what they call an equivalency academy. And that's the same process that RJ Partridge had to follow because he came from Hawaii. So it's the same process. And they are backlogged. And I have not been able to check to see how soon we can get him into that course. And if it is going to be delayed, we would start his FTO program upon hire. And then whenever we can get him into the academy, he'll just leave, do the academy, come back and finish the FTO program.
There was, did you hear the question about South Clough? Is there anything you can add to that? They're going it alone?
I was never consulted or spoken to or anything. All I know is the letter that that Rob received that they didn't want to sign the contract as it was proposed to them and will be terminating in 90 days. I did ask Rob if we could possibly step that up to the first of the year to make it easier for us. And I know he reached out to them, but as far as I know, they have not responded with that request. So at this, as of today, anyway, we're assumption will be leasing for them until mid February.
They're going with the contract with the sheriff. We don't know any details. We raised the price. Yes, any case. Okay, that's it for you then, Kirk?
Yes, and as far as that goes, as we're gonna have to look at redoing our patches, redoing our uniforms, redoing our car decals, business cards, signage, on and on and on. Because South Clough, of course, was represented equally amongst the three cities and all of our uniforms and letterhead, et cetera, is integrated. um uniforms and letterhead, et cetera, um is integrated completely throughout the department. So we'll be working on that uh to get everything correct uh soon as we can at the first of the year.
Hey. So next we'll hear from our Spark Chief, Ed Mills.
Hey, Mayor and City Council. Uh, the month of November, we had forty-one calls. Uh, thirty-three were the were emergency uh medical. Uh, we had three fire, one hazardous condition with no fire and four good intent. Um, the fire calls, uh, one was a motor home fire, uh, believed down off from Third. Uh, it was contained to the engine compartment. Uh, then we had an alarm set in uh new residence uh was due to burnt steak on the stove. Uh, so no extension there. Uh, and we had a brush pile that a residence was burning a fallen tree. So again, just to remind the citizens in the city limits, uh, you can't burn yard debris. It's only an ornamental fire. So um, I thank you, uh, Mayor, for getting council's approval on the new officers of two thousand twenty-two. They remain the same. Uh, I believe the officers have been the same for the last three years. So uh, looking forward to uh serving the citizens for the year of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, there was a question on the stipend. Um, I think uh to fill council in and those that are watching, uh, the city play pays the volunteers a a total of sixteen thousand dollars for the year. And uh, I don't believe I remember the exact year, but the members voted to give half of that back to uh various different functions. So the city takes eight grand and divides it amongst the members of the department. So right around Christmas time, the city writes a stipend to pay the volunteers for their service. So uh, they get a small, small con uh compensation for their time uh and it helps out. Any questions?
Oh, quiet here, Ed. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now we'll hear from William Leroux, our V O L E A operator.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my graphs that I provide you every month are in your package. Nothing startling going on in there. Uh, it's been very quiet up here at the water treatment plant for the uh November to beginning of December. Uh, we are currently running about eight hours a day total, meeting all the demand of the system. With it being quiet, it's allowed me the opportunity to get a good review of the water system plan and send off uh my comments to uh HLA. So I'm looking forward to hearing something back from them. And we're in the process of starting to close out our twenty twenty-one records and getting the twenty twenty-two records uh opened up. At the wastewater plant, the SBR reactor number one is online, fully seated and operational. On the twenty-third of November, we lost power to the PLC control system down there and had to run the plant in uh in manual for several hours. Um, that plant is not like the water plant. It doesn't like to run in manual. So it was was quite an issue. Um, our spare PLC card that we pulled out of the box, somebody had put a note on there that said it was bad. Uh, so we did not have a backup card uh in stock. The cards are uh obsolete. If you can find them, they're about ten thousand dollars apiece. Uh, a quick phone call to Darian Osage up at Sun Cadia just to reach out the they had uh removed a bunch of the Allen Bradley equipment. And by a stroke of luck, he had a five oh five card that we needed. Brought it down to us. We got it plugged in and the program loaded back on and the plant back up and operational. So I will be coming to you in the very near future with a breakdown of what it's gonna cost to move away from this outdated Allen Bradley system to a Ethernet-based operation. Um, this was a a real eye-opener uh for me on what needs to happen down there uh to try to keep that thing operational during all conditions. Um, so there'll be more discussion coming on that one here uh as I get more of the information pulled together. Uh, project status-wise, uh, the VFDs were uh delivered to us on uh November ninth. The installation began on uh December sixth and they completed the installation on the uh twelfth of December. So they're in. The manufacturer representatives are in town today. They will be here on site tomorrow to commission uh the two new units. And so I'm hoping by this time tomorrow afternoon, we have both of those up and operational. Uh, and we're back to a uh uh, a normal uh operational scheme. The uh SCADA system down at the wastewater plant has been turned over to us one hundred percent. We received uh all the documentation and the backup disk for the programs. So that's all all good to go at this point. Um, one question that I have, I'm sure you folks are all aware of what's happened upstream at Elk Meadows with the bridge collapse. Who do I need to get in touch? Emergency contact phone list. That truck in the river with the garbage and the diesel and everything else has a direct impact on this water treatment plant. And I did not know anything about this until I tuned into the council meeting and I heard people talking about it. Anybody have any idea who I can contact to get on emergency services contact number for anything upstream of this plant?
We uh, and it's, I'm surprised, we actually had this very problem uh a few years ago with a fuel truck at the freeway. And uh, there was supposed to be uh some sort of uh system, but it's obviously gone uh sideways some way or another. Uh, we'll have to look into it. We'll have to find out. We had quite a few meetings here uh with that other incident included Department of Ecology and Fish and Wildlife and uh all the agencies and even the uh first responders and stuff. And so uh it fell in deaf ears. We'll have to look at it. I'm surprised you didn't hear anything.
I heard nothing till I I signed on to the council meeting and I heard the guys talking about it. And I quickly looked on Facebook and saw what was going on. And from what I saw, this was like three to four hours ago. Had I had known when this happened, we could have gone over to the well field and this would have been a non-issue. As it is, the plant's been online for several hours. So there's that potential. We could suck up God knows what was in that garbage truck. And there certainly is diesel leaking out of that truck. I don't know if the vehicle is still in the river or not at this point.
Likely it is.
Yeah.
It's it's a quite large.
I got a, I got a press release. Press releases, that might be, it's the first place to start, but it seems like you should get a phone call.
For sure. Yeah, we had, we had, there was quite a commotion about this because it happened with a fuel truck that they had at the river. You know, I forget how many years ago we had a number of meetings here. So uh
Well, with your permission, Mayor, I would like to raise cane and uh within the the entities uh so that I can get on a list and be notified of these things.
We'll do that. Uh, Beth has a question.
Would Kitcom be a good contact to release that information?
They absolutely should have easily.
Yeah.
They just have to know. Of course, a lot of new people at Kitcom that, you know, who needs to get notified. And uh, oh, I guess the last time the big hiccup was that the state patrol tells the people in Anchee and then when Anchee's gonna tell people down here and there's a whole chain that that broke.
At the very least, Kitcom should be able to notify.
For sure. Easily, easily.
Hey, Rob, can you look into that?
Oh, yeah, don't worry. We'll look into it. We'll look, we'll work with you, William. We'll uh uh, we'll make the best of this situation somehow. Uh, one thing, William, uh, you were mentioning, I don't think a lot of people know maybe what a VFD is and where the VFDs are.
A VFD stands for variable frequency drive. Uh, they are used to start up the uh pumps here at the water treatment plant. And the idea of a variable frequency drive is that we fully wrap the power to the into the motor to get it spinning. So we have a an initial surge to get everything moving and then bring the speed and the power up uh on the pump. So it is uh basically soft starting. We're not hammering on the pipes with water hammer and have the potential of uh blowing fittings apart on the pipes. Uh, they're used here at the water treatment plant, both on the finished water production and on the raw water production.
Yes, the other thing is that uh that hammering, like he says, uh, causes the electric bill to go sky high also. So I didn't know if any of you knew what VFDs were.
He's talked about them enough this year. I knew at least what it stood for.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah. Okay, that looks like it for officer reports. The next we have citizen comment on non-agenda items. And one up, we usually try to limit you to five minutes, but tell us what your name is and uh where you're from and what your.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. My name is Larry Stauffer. Uh, two six six one, lower field one. First of all, I want to say I think those were some fantastic questions by the council as it relates to forty-seven comments that were provided by consultants. I do wonder uh what your initial quality or what you think about the initial quality of information that you're being provided, but I'll let you stew on that. But great follow-up. You didn't just sit and take it. You paid attention and asked that question. Um, I don't know what is scheduled. It's to a change to ordinance sixteen twenty-one. I'm given, I've got the impression that there's going to be a change, notwithstanding the fact that sixteen twenty-one had been previously provided in public and reviewed. But so in in light of my expectation for a proposed change, I'd like to hand these out to you.
Thank you.
And don't feel it's necessary to reach for, but it it's right now. It's it's just got a bunch of backup information to my needs. And we have to leave one for the city. Okay. Yeah. You've heard me express my desires to hear about preliminary determination consistency in the past as it relates to uh forty-seven degrees north. It's a non-issue right now. They've drawn their application. We all know that. But going forward, I'm concerned about what happens, not only if that project rears its head, but also another classified type, you know, big, big deals. So my expectation is that uh Mr. Dorn is going to propose an amendment to remove the requirement for the city to provide a preliminary determination of consistency. That ordinance was initially changed in August. You uh see, the the planning department recommended it. Staff recommended it. You approved it. That ordinance has been um I don't want to, it's been reassembled with different code numbers, et cetera, but has remained within ordinance um sixteen twenty-one that you've recently gone back through. That same provision stands in there. Now, a- after you and the public and everybody else has had a chance to kind of try to see what things were, what the changes that were proposed within that language, none of it's highlighted. It's difficult to track. But regardless, that provision stands, except I understand to amend that and and the discuss, the comment is it it needs to align with uh the RCW. Well, the RCW says if the city has it, they can present or should present. Um, that's what the RCW says. The current language says the city will provide. So there's a difference between a may or may not, if you really think about it. So um, I guess my position is to the council that there there is no requirement for the language to align completely with the RCW if it's not in conflict. Greg's statement that the item six does not align is not correct in my view. The RCW language that is currently in place states that the city in effect will provide a preliminary determination of consistency at the time that an application is notes. Greg is proposing that the city may provide one if they have it. The same RCW quoted by Greg states the city may include any information determined to be appropriate by the local government, youth city. Using the term may is the same thing as saying may not. Following the recent discussion related to the City Council handbook and the ethics section, I suggest that transparency has been severely lacking as it relates to the forty-seven degree north issue. I'm hopeful that it won't be repeated in the future. A modification to item six would have the effect of keeping both the applicant and the public in the dark as it relates to the city's initial view of an application. At the last planning commission meeting, shelter resource asked what amounted to a preliminary determination of consistency relating to a possible development. This wasn't even an application and this happened last week. Planning Commission thought that's a reasonable thing to to ask and they provided it. It's not something that is difficult to do and creates opportunity for significant savings of both time and expense to the applicant and the city. So I I hope you take into consideration all that when and if somebody comes to you and says, hey, let's strike this uh level of visibility to the public. Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about non-agenda items. Although it seems rather, what I have to say seems rather irrelevant in view of your, in view of your uh.
Tell us who you are.
Okay, sorry, Jay. I'm Phil Hess. I live at forty-six fifty Airport Road.
Just just for the record, we know.
I know, I know, and I I apologize. But anyway, again, my comments seem rather specific uh than you of what you already have on your plate. But uh, I'll go ahead anyway. Yeah. It was very interesting to me at the last uh City Planning Commission meeting that the uh, there was a visitor from the County Community Development Services, Jeremy Johnson, who brought the planning commission current with uh projects that have county jurisdiction that have, they have an impact on the city. And specifically, he was referring to what's going on up at Forest Ridge. Uh, this is tributary to Columbia Street. So Mr. Johnson acknowledged that there is a reality that uh land use projects under county jurisdiction have an effect on city plant use plan versus. Bring this to the point again, that it's readily apparent that we need a coordinated approach as to how we envision the upper county communities and we're aware as to look in the future. And I'm being a little bit redundant there. But anyway, again, our goal is to pass on an exceptional upper county community to the next generation. Um, in relation to that, in regard to that, we are aware that we live in a fire-prone area. And we've been very fortunate that we have not yet experienced a catastrophic fire like California, Paradise, California. And this is not just me saying this. Uh, talk to our fire chiefs and any of our local fire behavior experts will verify this. This is why in May of two thousand seventeen, we formed KFAK, Kid of Task Fire Adapted Communities Coalition. May of two thousand seventeen. The City Cop Plan on page thirty-one thirty-one refers to KFAK with a goal statement, quote, to create a fire adapted landscape. That's just about the only reference in the City Cop Plan that I can find that has any reference to uh the Kid of Task Fire Adapted Communities Coalition. So landscape-level fire resiliency planning is closely interconnected with land growth management and land use planning in the upper county UGA's and the rural areas. So one of the KFAK's first accost accomplishments in two thousand eighteen was to develop a county-wide community wildfire protection plan, CWPP. There's another CWPP in the, in the uh City Cop Plan, but I'll refer to CWPP as the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. This can be a guide to the development of the county cohesive fire management strategy. The plan. As near as I can tell, has just been put on the shelf, both at the county level and. Local communities. So I'd like to call your attention to a synopsis of the CWPP, a publication that. Superseded the the big notebook. You can find the big notebook on the fire marshals website. I have a copy over here, but anyway, I'm going to leave copies of this. For the city council and many of the the audience. One of the. So the CWPP is all about creating fire adapted communities. So everything proposed to development, city and county should be reviewed for compliance with the CWPP. The CWPP was signed by the chairman of the by the V O C C Board of County Commissioners. It was signed by the State Department of Natural Resources and it was signed by. Somebody I can't remember, another agency I can't remember, but it was not signed off by any of the. Upper County Communities, not signed off by the city of Cleone, which I think it should have been. Or Roslyn, or Easton, or Ronald. I believe it kind of got. Put on the shelf, but anyway. This is an excellent document that should be reviewed for compliance on any future development, especially those on. In the UGA. The county cop plan on page one seventy five states that the county will encourage rural developments in the way. By land urban interface to develop a CWPP. Now, the use of word of courage, I think there should be stronger language there, but anyway, that's what the county cop plan says. So this this is not being done, obviously, it's not required to be done, but it'd be a very good. Idea, I think, if we're going to ever accomplish. Landscape level fire adapted community. The developers should have a local CWPP. And they have the guidebook to do it in our county wide one. There's no question that our green forested landscape is one of the attributes that makes this a such a pleasant area to live. And attract tourism. And this is what we all want to pass on to the next generation, a green forested landscape versus gray or black. We're going to have fires, but it's going to take frequent forest management. Of trees, the shrubs and the ground covers to make sure that those fires stay on the ground and not in the crowds. And they're easier to control and manage. Not like two thousand nineteen. I ninety wood duck fire. Infrequent trees and other vegetation grows, meaning that there has to be periodic, meaning five to ten years intervals. To reduce fuels and maintain fire resiliency. This is not new stuff. Prescribed fire should be one of the tools where appropriate. We're fortunate during the I ninety wood duck fire that we had. Firefighting resources that were available for prompt initial attack and a fairly quick suppression. You know, if that fire had occurred when the resources weren't available, it could have been a a much greater tragedy. But did we learn anything? Just take a look at I ninety right away from Cleone westbound to the UGA west flow. As a minimum, we should be adamant in in implying or insisting that the DOT clean up the ground fuels. Put up the ladder fuels within their right of way. This is a disaster waiting to happen, and it's going to, the entire UGA is at risk. Ideally, this prescription should extend to outside the right of way. Do that hundred and fifty foot script owned by the adjacent landowner before you get to the city property. City horse park property. Better yet, the entire UGA between I ninety and Bullfrog Road. At each two highway nine oh three. Should be, I'll use the term fire wise, which means. Vegetation treatment for fire resiliency and. Forest health. This is addressed in the city cop plan on page one thirty one where refers to growth planning will include provisions to create. A fire adapted landscape. This is particularly. To what is proposed for bullfrog flats. We can't keep the forest from burning, it's going to burn. The only decision space we have is how it will burn on the ground or in the crowds. Again, KFAK can do the heavy lifting. But they are going to need some encouragement or for prod from. Need to be involved at the table.
Way to go, Phil. Prescribed fire is essential to what you're talking about.
Yes, it is.
We have, we just had our our fire chief inform us that can't have fire. And it's like. Wait a second, we we've got. If I'm not mistaken, a conflict with state law. If we start proposing prescribed fire.
Well, that's not quite true, but the the alternative, we have to manage vegetation.
I'm trying to come up with reasons to do more controlled fire.
Okay.
Because otherwise the costs accelerate to do this work, they multiply. And all of a sudden, we haven't gotten anything done. And this bullfrog property, I I worked for the former landowner at the time they sold it, it was fire wise beautifully in nineteen ninety six. All spaced out, it's all grown up, you know, that's been what twenty seven years now? And it's in desperate need of more fire wise. And putting it in piles and torching them off is the the way to do it. Safely. It it seems like we we've got. Just waving a fire wise flag, we've got to be able to dispose this stuff without multiplying the costs.
Exactly, so prescribed fire is a tool to use following mechanical treatment. We need to treat these forests, which we value as green so much. Periodically, every five to ten years, to do it mechanically is cost prohibitive. I mean, as Ken has pointed out. Prescribed fire has got to be one of the tools, even in developed communities somehow, I'm not. An expert on fire behavior, but if we do the mechanical treatment and we follow it up with prescribed fire at the correct interval. It's a whole lot cheaper. Than periodic mechanical treatments, this is not new, I mean. They know that.
I'm interested in talking to our legislators on this issue.
Thank you, Jim.
And and I might recruit Phil.
Yeah.
Thanks, Phil, really appreciate it.
I'll leave these over here.
Okay, that's great. We'll. Any other citizen comments? Okay. We can move on from this. There's no public appearances, there's no business requiring public hearings. We're down to unfinished business, ordinance sixteen twenty one, and this is going to be. Washington students.
Good evening again, mayor and members of the city council, this is a. Continuation of a matter that came before the council previously. The council and its this review asked that we prepare a number of amendments. To the to the regulations. And we have highlighted those provisions and as you previously heard have. Brought to our attention that there it was a important phrase missing from. The regulations and we're proposing to to add the additional words so that the. Regulations read consistent with the. State law. The the as written right now. With respect to the notice of application, it reads a statement of the preliminary determination. What is missing is the following words from the state law, which says. If one has been made at the time of notice of those development regulations that will be used. For project mitigation and the consistency determination. So in other words, what the state law says is that the notice of application should identify. The regulations that will be used to evaluate, not the preliminary determination of the of the application itself. That will come following the the public comments, the agency comments. And a thoughtful evaluation of the application. In accordance with the city regulations, so that is a clarification that apparently has caused some. Confusion and properly so, and we would correct that, but if you have any. Is about the amendments that you requested can certainly respond to those. And we also did, as you will note, leave some mark comments in the margin. For your future consideration and perhaps as. The regulations are further refined and developed over time. You may want to address some of those additional questions about membership on the planning commission. But I'll certainly respond to any questions that you might have at this time.
So I have some thoughts, but I I'm going to at the end of this move that we push this to the next meeting because the actual. Text is illegible, anything that was green, both in the printed version and on the electronic version, so. Some of the staff comments provided, I couldn't actually read, so I'm going to want to vote this, but. Couple of questions I had was on fourteen ten oh two oh, which I don't actually know what page. Four. Four. So there's a, it talks to hear about the. Like I said, move on to page five, so we're looking at item A five. It talks about removing members of the planning commission. Removed by the mayor and then subject to the city council, which is currently what's in there, is taken out. Curious as to why currently the resolution, well, one of the resolutions that's created by the planning commission. Actually calls for a public hearing as well as removal by the mayor and then because then the city council, so we drastically. Shrunk the. Accountability for this, and I I certainly have a some big opposition with removing the city council from this process. Now. That change was made, Greg.
Sure, it we had a situation that came up recently and. The the planning commission. Chair consulted with the mayor about a the removal of a planning commissioner from the planning commission and. And and so when I was reading through it and I saw that provision and saw that that provision was different than the the. The practice that just occurred. I I made that revision to. Align with the with the recent practice. Sometimes, you know, a, you know, removal from the commission would be could be for things like a missed meeting or, you know, a series of missed meetings or something. I I wonder about things like neglect of duty or malfeasance being subject to a a public hearing. Where it might be more like a personnel or performance issue. Which requires a degree of confidentiality, but that's that I I leave that for your consideration and and commissioner in light of your your. The our intent to 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 highlight everything. Apparently, it it must change colors depending on the computer, because. Unfortunately, I can read it all perfectly, but it sounds like you cannot, so I think your your request to to also hold it over the next meeting would be appropriate.
Yeah, I don't I don't, I understand what just happened, although I think he ended up resigning and we didn't. We didn't actually end up removing him, but in theory, he says it is now, he shouldn't have just been. Public ring and and all of that, which I think the public hearing might be a little maybe one step too far, but I I think having the city council involved in there is is appropriate. And then. A five subsection A talks about. The essentially creating parity with what we have in state law, if you miss three meetings unexcused, you can be removed. I would also note that I I don't think it should be excused by the chair of the planning commission, but it should be excused by the body. Just like we do it, I think the body should be the one doing the excuses and and not the chair, so those were those were two things that I saw. Off the top that I was that I was curious about, yeah.
Stephen has a question, hang on.
I would actually make just a comment. When we place, when we place a key like on page one that says amendments requested by city council are highlighted in yellow. And underlying and straight through formats. That it actually aligned with that, we didn't ask.
That's true, we didn't ask.
We didn't ask for some of these edits, and then we have what I would call the green eyed monster of edits that were just suggested, not at our request. We're we're. We are given a document from the planning. Commission, my understanding is that's that's the author of this document, and they are giving us their recommendations. And you're certainly welcome in a verbal public format to contest any of these recommendations. But I don't think that it's the fairest or most accountable or honorable way to. What would what could be interpreted as slipping them in on the slide. Hoping that they'll just go through an honest presentation like we're getting tonight. Unsolicited, I believe. For these. To to be given to us, especially they've already gone through the planning commission.
If I could just clarify for the record, there was certainly no intent to slip anything by, that's why we highlighted everything and and. The endeavor was to provide not only response to your request, but to provide the benefit of 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 our experience, my experience and and best judgment, but. I I certainly understand and accept and would fully support. If a if a recommendation or suggestion is made and is not deemed appropriate by the council, it would be in your prerogative. Not to approve it or to to ask for further clarification, so I I fully respect that, but I I would like to clarify, there was certainly no intent. To slip anything by the city council, in fact, just the opposite.
And I'm not declaring that intent, I'm just saying, just by the nature of comments made by the public, etc. It it could be taken that way, and so to avoid that type of confusion, I think a clear outlining of them rather than meaning. Maybe a synopsis rather than just the synopsis I have before me. Is amendments proposed by city staff are highlighted in green and underlying and straight through format, a little bit better either verbal synopsis of those screen edits or. A quick, you know, run through. At the time of, you know, like at the beginning might be, I I get that you addressed all this addressed publicly, but maybe a a quick synopsis of all the. The unsolicited changes might might be helpful.
I have two other items, but if anybody else wants to chime in first. I I just wanted to, I wanted to respond to Greg, your your notes in the margin here, because I think that they're interesting. I I know that. Again, I think it changed in the nineties, I saw something with. Our planning commission chair when he was mayor. Changing it so that because I think we have problems getting planning commissioners, so we sort of slowly reduce the requirements to be essentially now. Essentially, anyone on the planning commission could be that outside the city limits. Just need to live in the school district and and while I think it's important that we allow a certain number of folks on the planning vision that live. Outside the city limits because of the decisions that are made affect the the area at large. I I do like the idea of setting a minimum number that need to be in the city, and I think that we should do. I, I do like the idea of setting a minimum number that need to be in the city, and I think that we should do that before we pass this document. I think that is an important change to be made, and maybe we should talk to the planning commissioner on what they think that number should be, but I think that's an appropriate change. And then the other one in here that I saw that was interesting was in the future, the planning commission should need to only meet once a month. And I wanted to ask about that because my understanding from talking to some of the planning commissioners is. They had some things they wanted to accomplish this last year, affordable housing and some other things, and were essentially told, no. Um, this is your work plan for the year, there's not going to be time for that, and so I'm. Curious how we've gone from way too many things, they can't work on the things that they think we need to work on to. We now can have fifty percent less meetings and still get it done.
Yeah, I, I, I think going back to the, to the, the, the points that were raised earlier about the importance of. Setting priorities and have that being the product of discussions between. The mayor and the city council and, and allocating resources. Uh, accordingly, the um, um, based on the um. The, the, the establishment of the hearings examiner system um, and. Um, dealing with current planning, and my experience has been that one meeting a month. Uh, of the planning commission and, and focusing on priorities that a lot be accomplished and that. Having two meetings a month can, 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 can lead to burnout as well as um, um, kind of. Impeding the ability to get all the, the, the priority items done, so it, it's a, a recommendation or a thought based on. Experience and um, the, and, and there are provisions to add more meetings, but it. If it's, you know, the prerogative of the council or desire of the council that the planning commission meet more. Continue to meet twice a month, that, that certainly can be a, a, you know, a simple change to, to delete that provision.
I, I appreciate that, as you're the one closest to the planning commission, I guess I. I, I'm curious, just was this just a really crazy year, or is the curious environment system gonna really. Reduce their workload by that much, I just, that's what I guess, that's what I'm wondering, because you're the one closest to them.
Yeah, I, my sense is, is that um, um. The, the planning commission in, in, in the, the, the last several months has, has really accomplished uh, quite a bit and. Um, um, is, is functioning at a high level, and I say based on experience, I found that. That one planning commission meeting a month um, is, 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 is the norm and is kind of a. Reasonable level of, of effort and based on the progress, you know, made by the planning commission, that seems. That seems reasonable, um, wh- wh- was my thought, and I wanted to, to, to share that with you as we were kind of. Looking at these other, you know, ways of trying to increase participation and the like. It can be set aside or, or monitored during the coming year, um, um, you know, before a decision is made.
All right, the first question would be, maybe we ask them. Um, but I think the other way to look at it is we could have two meetings a month, and if they feel like they can. Cancel the second one of the month, then they cancel the second one of the month, but it, it allows for a regular schedule if they need to get stuff done.
True.
Great, but that's the extent of the comments, I.
And any other comments? So we're looking to get a clear.
I just had a question for Councilman Lund, do you believe that the, the wording as it's proposed precludes them from having other meetings?
I don't know what's proposed, because I can't read that line, uh, I just see the note in the, in the side, which is why, so I don't know what that says. Um, so I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that, actually, I guess I haven't even looked, happy sent me a little bit ago, but. I think we can talk about that, but I think I, I would like to hear, since it looks like these may have been. Added after the planning commission sent it, that we get their input on those things, because it directly affects them. And I don't want to overburden our volunteers, but I also don't want to feel like we're changing. This to help them, but at the same time, not giving them the time they actually want to work on other things that. May be important.
Sure, and I, and I, I would, I would note though, that the way that this document reads. The city staff consultation with the mayor and the uh, council determine the work. I, I, I think the actual, but the work path, it's not the, it's not the planning commission that determines their plan of work.
I, I agree, but I think we should leave open to have them suggest things they want to do, because. Again, they know how much they're working on, and if there's things that they think are important. I'm, I, I'd love for them to do more research on how we can approve affordable housing or. Think it's something we should be looking at as we build more into the wooey area, so I just think. You know, if that's on the list, we should be open to them suggesting things that they could do to help us.
Yeah, and, and there is a provision as you scroll down. Um, um, where the planning commission prepares and presents an annual report to the. Mayor and city council highlighting the activities of the past year. And, and recommending um, priorities for the coming year, so there is a provision there now that. Um, hopefully isn't obscured by, by the highlighting, um, that is, as you review it. See if that kind of addresses uh, your thoughts, and if not, um, let us know and we can further revise that.
So while that urban interface, so it's that. That area where a whole bunch of stuff's being built, and I think we need to be looking at. How we encourage that area to be fire wise from the beginning, because that's when we got that shot.
Yes. Okay, so any other questions about this uh, for Greg? Do you have sufficient marching orders, Greg?
I, I do. Thank you very much, no, the, the comments are helpful and appreciated, and uh, we'll get it back to, to council, I think instead of. My thought is instead of waiting until your next agenda packet would be to try to follow up on this quickly and have it. Uh, before you over the ho- holidays, and then we can always refresh it when it's on the agenda at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're down to new business. And uh, uh, Ben and is gonna walk us through quite a few things here. And the first thing under A is the Stafford Avenue. The agreement, Ben and.
All right, good evening, honorable mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. Um, as mayor mentioned, we've got several items there, we'll try to work through these as efficiently as we can. Uh, things that it's already seven forty, but uh, we'll get started with the CDBG. Application, so about six months ago, we prepared the CDBG application, and in September. The application was awarded eight hundred thousand dollars in grant funding. So this, the first step in this process is executing the agreement with uh, Department of Commerce to allow expending those CDBG funds. If you recall, this is for that Stafford Avenue corridor, uh, there's two parts to the project. It's water main improvements as well as street improvements and uh. I'll chase the waters running upstairs, my, my wife must be running a bath for the girls, so hopefully it's not too loud there, the speaker. Uh, so with that, uh, this, this first item is execution of the CDBG agreement between the city and Department of Commerce. It's, it's basically just a motion by the, by the council. Mayor to authorize, or to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement.
Make a motion. I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the. Uh, CDBG general purpose grant, eight hundred thousand dollars for the Stafford corridor.
Second. Move the second to authorize mayor to sign the uh, the CDBG agreement. Questions on the motion? Very none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Close. The uh, agreement will be signed.
Note, eight hundred thousand dollars, thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next. We're gonna dis. And the Stafford Avenue uh, CDBG consultant agreement with HLA.
All right, so now that the agreement has been authorized with CDBG, now it's time to get busy and, and get the project designed and. And constructed next year, and so this is a professional services agreement for project administration. Environmental compliance, design engineering as well as construction engineering, so basically cradle to grave services. Um, for administering this project from start to finish. Hope is to begin this effort immediately uh, before the winter hits and uh, get a survey crew up there immediately to. Provide topographic survey of the corridor, that way, over these next couple of winter months, we can get a strong start on the design. As well as the environmental review, um, because this is a federally funded project, it's full NEPA. And all the other environmental components, so. Um, this would be looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement between HLA and the city, happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I mean, Ken, Ken, Ben, Ken, Ben, you know, Ben, Ken, go ahead.
You heard my concerns before. You, you're, you're still gonna try and ease that grade down.
Absolutely, the intent of the project again is the street improvements and water improvements, uh, the grade has been. Well, it's, it's either the top issue or the secondary issue of the condition of the road, but equally important, uh, the intent is to lessen that grade. Uh, to the maximum extent possible, you know, within the confines of the project funding too, without introducing. Um, excess funding that, that the city doesn't have accounted for. So we'll certainly look at all those options, Ken.
Great, okay.
And we'll get, we'll keep Ken a pretty up praise.
Yeah, I'd appreciate uh, seeing the. Yes.
Happy to provide then.
Great, uh, I make a motion that we. Uh, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for professional services with HLA. For the Stafford Avenue corridor improvements. Community development block grant funding.
Can I get a clarification? Yep, here's, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that there's multiple agreements and you want to authorize the mayor to be able to. Uh, sign all those two original, are they the same, the same?
It's a Stafford Avenue. With quite a few uh.
I have.
Pieces to it.
Two exhibits, yes.
Yeah, with the exhibits and so on.
It's two of the same, no, right, that's normally how those are.
It is a single agreement, is it not, Ben?
Correct, there's two original agreements, the mayor would sign both, the city would keep one, and then you'd send one back to HLA.
Yeah.
Second, okay, it's moved and seconded. To authorize the mayor to sign Stafford Avenue corridor improvements. CDVG project number twenty one dash sixty two ten dash zero two six. Agreement for professional services with HLA. Questions on the motion? Very none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Close. Very none, the agreement will be signed. Don't go away, Ben. Okay, now we're at C, this is the Douglas Monroe at First Street, a signal of. The TIB fuel packs agreement, and then we'll talk about that.
Great, thank you. Uh, so as you're aware, we've been busy writing grant applications this past year, and uh, the city was successful with the, with this latest round of transportation improvement board. Grant applications. Dollar. Wide in terms of um, awards, I think there was upwards of two hundred and fifty million dollars of, of requests. And, and the city played almost successful for the Douglas and First traffic signal. Uh, funding request that was put in, which uh, I believe was five hundred and. Twenty five thousand nine hundred twenty dollars, so just over five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, it does come with a five percent match, and so the city would be responsible uh, for that portion. Uh, which equates to, I believe it was twenty, twenty five or twenty six thousand dollars, but essentially. Uh, ninety five percent of the project was, was funded by TIB. Uh, this first item on the agenda is the fuel payment between TIB and the city for administering those funds. And so this would be looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. Any questions? Councilman Harper.
Yeah, my understanding is that while this has, this was pontificated at one point. Uh, that, and, and we certainly appreciate, you know, going after grants. Um, there was no direct request by the city or this, or by the council. I guess my question is how, how did, what was the genesis of this request to TIB? Or is it, you flashing these out in front of cities and saying, hey, do you want to do it, or how's that work?
Yeah, that's a great question, so this project is in the city's six year transportation improvement plan. Uh, it is identified as, as an intersection that's performing at a level of service less than the city's current standard. Uh, this is for the PM peak hour. In addition to that deficiency, there's a Friday PM peak as well as a Sunday PM peak that have level of service. Values considerably lower, however, the city standard is based on the PM peak, so. This is the problem intersection, there, there are three other intersections. Identified in the six year tip that are operating at level of service standards below. Um, the city standards, and so this was one that um. It fit a lot of the criteria well in terms of what TIB was looking to fund. Um, so it's went after the application and it, and it scored very well in terms of the competitive criteria.
So we, so we ultimately. Asked for it as, as a council, I guess we could say, by approving the transportation plans uh, that we've approved. And that's why I just, I'm, I, I just wanted to tell the council that I've gotten a lot of uh. Um, feedback that nobody wants another stoplight. Out there.
But I, I'll remind the council that our job is public health and safety, and I'm gonna tell you that is dangerous up there.
I've heard people call me about this, but no one said I don't want it, they just wanted to know that it was happening or about it, so I haven't heard. Opposition necessarily.
Okay, Ken.
Um. Will, will this, uh, I, I think our curbs and sidewalks right on the corner. Are finished, but very quickly. Uh, Douglas Monroe Boulevard swings around towards the cemetery and is intersected by Ranger Station Road. Uh, and. When that was put in, I remember uh, Sun Katie did it, and. It was planned for one more lane. Towards the real estate office at the time, but it was considered not necessary at that time. Can any of this money go that far back from the, from the intersection? Or is it to be decided or uh? Look at.
That's a great question, Ken, I mean, there are, it is a three legged intersection on that north, excuse me, three lane intersection. On the north leg there, uh, but in terms of the intersection to the north, uh, Ranger Station Road and Douglas Monroe. Uh, that is not in the limits of the project, but certainly if, if uh, whether it's. Bid prices drop, which would be an act of God at this point, but let's hope that, that is a consideration for the future. Uh, if there was some additional funding there. Again, it's something that we'd want to look at and, and approach TIB with early, if, if that's something that. That is a consideration, it's, it's fair to approach that now with TIB than at the eleventh hour.
During. And there's other, other things that I know have changed through the years from, from that. What's tributary there and what's not, uh. Anyway, there's, there's, there's questions.
See, but usually, once you get started in an area, you can leapfrog from there. You know, it won't just like end with that scene.
Yeah, well. All there was back before Sun Katie came to town was Ranger Station Road.
Yeah.
And it went through what is now the corner of the gas station. And that's when the right of way was acquired and the large curve was made. Uh, around. Uh, the fuel station. Anyway. I, I'm getting past the, 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 the traffic light, I guess, but we'll talk, we'll talk about this stuff.
Okay.
It, it ties in with a lot of things, so.
Yeah, one thing to mention too, uh, the property just adjacent Warriors, I think the city's received. Two applications over the last couple of years for that, and neither has transpired at this. I believe is the mitigation that was identified specifically for this intersection and, and their pro rata share of, of this improvement. Uh, now that TIB is, is a large part of the, the project to make this come to fruition, that may. It may no longer be cross prohibitive to develop that property, so that could be a good thing in terms of development too.
Yeah, but we don't want a, a big traffic jam there, because even with a light, you can, you can back traffic up for who knows. How far, so we want it to work.
To my house.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, thanks, Ben, um, oh. Well, I make a motion. Well, I make a motion that we authorize the mayor.
Yeah, what's the topic? How do you address this, other than the State of Washington Transportation Movement Board and the City of Plowell Agreement on the light intersection? How would we phrase this?
Yeah, it's a fuel tax agreement, but I don't see, I don't see a signature line for the mayor.
It's on the last page or executive officer.
I see TIB. Lead Agency, okay, there we go. So I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign as the Lead Agency Chief Executive Officer for the TIB.
Fuel tax.
Fuel tax grant for five hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for the Douglas Monroe First Street Intersection.
Second. Moving to seconded to do that. To authorize the mayor to sign the fuel tax agreement that create the lights at Douglas Monroe First Street, the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. That's kind of my summation of your.
That's perfect.
Kathy will really get it.
Always.
Questions on the motion?
I would, a comment that I would rise in staunch opposition to the motion, that I will be voting in the negative toward any thing that would affect another stoplight at present in the city.
Well, let's see now, was that a question of the motion?
Just a comment.
Comment, okay. Any other? If not, all those in favor with aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All right, that's fine. The Field Tax Grant Agreement has been approved and will be signed by the mayor. And next, Ben, we have again a consultant agreement to do this work.
I believe. Thank you, Mayor. So same thing as the CDVG project, the funding has now been awarded. It's just to authorize a fuel tax agreement. Now it's time to get to work on this one. We've already done some legwork with some sub consultants. We've got electrical engineer, a proposal from them to do the electrical engineering on it in terms of the signal design, and so that is included in this consultant agreement. This includes project administration, funding reimbursements, essentially working hand in hand with Robin to make sure the funding flows to the city quickly so you can continue to pay those bills. So any questions on the consultant agreement?
I'll move that we authorize the mayor to sign the consultant agreements for the TIB grant in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars.
Move consecutive to authorize the mayor to sign the consultant agreement with TIB tax grant. Where is that amount? Yeah, sixty-two thousand nine hundred. Yes, let's see, it's down, I don't know. Questions on the motion? There are none, all in favor with aye? Opposed? The consultant agreement will be signed. And just for the record, the nays were by Stephen Harper, just so that we know. Okay. All right, next, we're gonna try and get some more money for this project. The DWSRF, what is that?
Water State Revolving Fund.
Okay, and this is a reconstruction loan application. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, thank you. So yes, this is a funding opportunity through the Department of Health Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Several years ago, Department of Health, they brought out this program rather than their once-a-year competitive application cycle. And this is specifically for design services, environmental reviews, everything prior to construction. And this was in efforts to allow small cities, you know, the opportunity to design, get project shovel ready, and then come September through the typical cycle for construction loans, agencies would be ready to go immediately upon award. And so this is an opportunity to get the design done, the environmental complete, and have a project shovel. Project is a combination of project numbers one and four in the water system plan in terms of priorities. This is the Rosetti Way Loop, which includes the pressure-reducing valve station. Essentially, that provides redundancy in another point of connection from the city's upper pressure zones to the lower pressure zones. Should any of the other PRVs fail for reliability on the city's water system. This is a critical component and it is listed as priority number one in the water plan. The second part of it is for the Second Street Water Main Replacement, which is essentially the backbone of the city's system. This basically starts at Reed Street on the west end and goes clear down to Short Avenue on the east end. This main, it's my understanding, has had several breaks over the years. And I know Mike and his crews, his Public Works crews have had their hands full on this and other sections of the main within the town. And so would recommend chasing the pre-construction loan funding opportunity. It is pretty unique in that it's a zero percent interest rate. You know, most loans have either, you know, half to one percent on typical DWSRF. USDA, I believe, is at two-two-five or two-five in terms of an interest rate. And so the terms are very favorable for small cities. There is a loan fee, and I believe it's two percent, which would amount to about six thousand dollars that you pay upfront. But other than that, it's a ten-year note with zero percent interest. And so a good opportunity to fund design, pre-construction efforts, to set something up for future success on a construction funding application. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on the application.
Have we had Robin?
Oh, boy. You think we could ever even begin this here? If I'm not mistaken, Rob, we're gonna take half of it out of the REIT one and then the water fund, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. And yes, she's looked at it and she's never really excited about any type of loans. But do you realize that, you know, it's zero percent interest? But she did say that she wants to make sure before we do any more loans, you know, to think about it again. But she's fine with it, yeah.
One of the questions in here is so many questions, our technical ability, do we have a certified water operator?
Yes.
Do we have an engineer? And can we raise the rates to pay for it?
I don't think we have to.
Okay, so, so I guess as a council member, I want an assurance that we're not needing to raise water rates to do.
That's my understanding. We'll use the REIT two and the water fund. Go ahead, REIT one, REIT one, not two. Yeah, and we'll use the funds that we set aside in the water system to start doing repairs.
For this, for this specific thing, yes, any other future completion of the project may.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're obviously gonna go after, we're gonna go after grants.
Yes.
That really makes a big difference, shovel rate.
Brief project description was pretty interesting. This is basically our second water main. Is that right? Identified this and been told by Public Works Director that that's that's our highest priority, and we don't have anything until we get a design put together. Yes, yes, so this is, this is good.
At the bottom of page eight, it says, identify the revenue sources, the system, water system we use. It mentions two loans, one from Columbia and then one from my school.
So they want to know what your other.
Current balance. And so we have a lot available, but nothing borrowed. And we have a lot available and a little borrowed from Columbia.
So these are those, a couple of years ago, we set up these loans that we needed emergency funding for matching brands.
Yes.
Okay, for matching.
Yeah, and through the years, we've had a few of them, and Robin was able to combine them.
Yeah, that's what that.
Huge savings to the city. And we are generally reluctant to borrow money in this council. We want to be careful what we do with the public's money.
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved that we authorize the mayor to sign the the DWSRF for construction loan application.
Moved in, seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the pre-construction. Loan agreement. Questions on the motion? Are none, all in favor with aye? Those opposed? Okay, it will be signed.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. If they can start having baths again, it's fine.
Sorry about that.
No, it's all right. We can put up a little bit of family around here, it's okay.
I'm just getting over to Ben with a tie on, so.
I knew that was gonna come up too.
Yeah, right, it's under the, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's down there. We'll save that for next time. Thanks, Council.
Okay, next is the Waste Management Contract for twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three. We tried our darndest to get this down to a year, but they weren't going for it. There's you know, various rationales in here. My biggest problem with our garbage collection agreements is that we have an ordinance that says garbage collection is mandatory, and we have very little control over what it costs the residents of this town. We're talking about price increases, one right here. But I don't have any choice. We're gonna go with it, and we'll see what we can do in the end of this contract to alleviate this.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the Waste Management Solid Waste Collection Agreement for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three.
Second. To to sign the Solid Waste Collection Agreement. Questions, go ahead.
So this agreement is for two years.
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three.
Yes. And I tried my darndest to make it one year, I'm here to tell you.
And ultimately, it's just a continuation of what we've traditionally done.
With the price increases which will come.
Yes, well, I would say that in the mayor's favor, at least it's only two years, and it gives us time to drive, drive, or possibly to bargain with.
Oh, yeah, and besides that, I'll tell you what, I had it together for a year, trucks and canisters. But they have some pretty strong cards here, so let's see. It said it's moved in second. Any other questions on the motion? This, who, I'm so caught up in this, I forgot, who moved in second?
I motioned, John seconded.
Okay, any other questions on the motion?
Are they required to stay on the road going forward?
Or have a little bit lighter weight trucks so they don't damage so much, you know? Not yet, I think that one's really is on the.
That bridge was a tough one.
Yeah, that's right, but I appreciate that comment. Okay, all those in favor with aye? Opposed? The mayor would reluctantly sign.
Well, I would say they won't be getting garbage service beyond the bridge anymore.
Yeah, now they're just on the river, not beyond. Who, yeah, yeah, well, no. Some history here, you know, that's what this city used to do. You know, that's what the city used to do. So, in any case, moving on. Okay, this is Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Dash Zero Twenty-Eight, adopting. Garbage, there it is, ordinance. Sixteen twenty-five, garbage rates increases, this is why Rob, he's gonna walk us through that.
I thought you'd just keep going there, Mayor, since you did the garbage contract. But no, anyways, this is an ordinance to raise the garbage rates. Unfortunately, we have to raise them up. We, Kathy and I looked at all of the, you know, situations, and it does raise it anywhere between twenty-five percent, and then there's also three percent. So we're looking for Council to authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance.
Can you repeat the last one? She just had a little loud in here.
You guys talking without me?
An increase of twenty-five percent.
There's, there's an ink, most of it's increasing twenty-five percent.
Okay, let Rob have the floor.
Most of it's, most of the residential is, is an increase of twenty-five percent. And then the commercial containers, we only had to raise three percent to keep the fund afloat. So is that your question?
So residences are twenty-five percent, commercial is only three.
Yeah.
Why is the, why are they imbalanced?
Because of what we're being charged.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't, you can't have business service shoulder residential service, and you can't have residential service shoulder business service. It has to be approximated to be able to recoup the cost for it's being charged by Waste Management. So Waste Management is charging more for residential pickup, right? And so the costs have to be manually passed along. Okay, that is the leverage that the mayor was talking about.
Yeah, kidding, so, I'm just gonna swallow hard. Yes.
And much as I don't like to vote for it, it is in keeping with, keeping our books balanced, and so I would move that or that we, you know, that we approve ordinance number sixteen twenty-five as presented.
Move the second to approve order sixteen twenty-five, establishing the new garbage rates. New garbage rates.
I have a question.
Questions?
Um, so that the public knows, what is considered senior for the garbage rates since they're a little bit lighter? It's the age limit. Tyler?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure of the exact age, but I believe we use the counties. And Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, we use the counties to get a, you know, pay lower taxes, isn't that correct?
Yes, when you, when you, when you qualify for your tax reduction in the county.
Oh, your property tax.
And that's by state statute qualification, and it's income limited. So if you're low-income senior, you qualify. But it's based on the state criteria, it's not the city.
Yes.
We have an answer for that, Ricky?
But the age.
It's, it's normally sixty-two years old.
Okay, thanks, Tyler.
There you go.
Any other questions on, any other questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, there's four in favor and one opposed. The post is by Ken Ratliff, the ordinance is passed. The rest of the uh ordinance is passed.
Was was there an attention or was it?
Four, one, two, three, four, five.
It's five, one.
Oh, sorry, Stephen. Uh, you're way out there, left field, right field, sorry.
Finally, not the only one he misses.
He's a catcher, yeah, he's a good, right, Phil, man, all right, sorry about that, Stephen. Uh, okay, let's see, here we go, now, we have resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twenty eight, adopting the. Twenty twenty two hotel motel tax distribution, Stephen.
I would say we always consider about the amount of paperwork involved, but I do like the favorable dispositions that we've gotten. I do appreciate uh councilman, uh, and councilman on those attendance uh, the. process, I do apologize for my lack of attendance. Um, basically, the way that it does is they collect different projects, and then they divvy up between the different municipalities. Generally, according to ones that happen within their city limits or close by. So we have the clown downtown association, and our portion of the lodging tax was uh, divvied up that way. Nine thousand one hundred twenty eight dollars and eighty seven cents, and then. Thousand two hundred uh and sixty dollars was allocated to the film roundup association. And so we would recommend that you approve resolution uh twenty twenty one dash zero two eight, funding these two projects from the lodging tax. Dollars, again, the reminder that uh the lodging tax money is generated not from uh people within the city necessarily. But by uh people who stay in the hotels and motels and other accommodations, they pay an extra tax. Uh, that is not optional, it is state, um, it is a state.
Mandate.
Mandated tax, and uh and then it's mandated its uses for the promotion of economic development and tourism, et cetera. And uh, and these projects are certainly in keeping with uh those ends.
I make a motion that we pass resolution number twenty twenty one dash oh twenty eight, adopting distribution of the hotel. Hotel motel tax fund grants.
Sorry, move the second to pass resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twenty eight. Adopting the distribution of the twenty twenty two hotel motel tax fund grants, questions on the motion? Are none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution uh twenty twenty one. Uh, dash zero twenty eight is passed. So now we're down to resolution uh twenty twenty one dash zero twenty nine, adopting the twenty twenty two fee schedule. And Rob will walk us through that.
Yes, thank you, uh, Honorable Mayor, City Council, uh, this is resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two nine. It is updating the fee schedule. Um, one thing to note, uh, exhibit A, and it's just the way that it's it's in our code, but um. Exhibit A is actually unchanged from this year to next year. What we're doing is basically updating the staff time, which is on the very back page. Uh, that's the only change, and we've just updated um. The staff, the staff time and equipment rate hours. That was the only change in this resolution. Questions?
There's another question, on the temporary signed deposit, what are the conditions for release of that uh of those funds?
Say that, say that question again.
Uh, the temporary signed deposit, I'm imagining, oh, most people would be getting that if they put out temporary signage related to political activity, et cetera. But it might be other uses, what is the condition for uh release of that deposit? Or return?
I I guess the condition would be that the signs are down, is if that's the, that's the uh intent. If they're temporary signs.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure, is there, do you know of a ordinance that actually enforces that? Um, or ultimately, is it, could they just request it back? But I I guess, yeah, my my question is, if we're not in them, if they're having them put a deposit. How does the city's checks and balances to make sure uh that those signs are down, and if staff time, how do we recoup that? You know, staff time, um, if they have to go out and verify that.
Well, I think, uh, I don't know if there's anything written down, but the intent, yeah, the intent is. Uh, if we have to take the signs down, then we don't give them the fifty dollars back. Um, I guess, we just kinda noticed the signs are up, and then we noticed the signs are down, and uh. Then they can request their fifty dollar back, which we don't even do uh deposit, it's typically a check, and then we keep it in the safe. And give give the check back to them.
So why don't we rent it out the the parks in the past?
But say that again, sorry.
Similarly, to when we rented out parks in the past, we just kept the deposit out.
Well, right.
But we understand this is.
Right, yeah, that's correct, Stephen, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would move, I'd move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash zero two nine, take a second for discussion.
Second.
Move the second to approve resolution twenty one. Twenty one dash zero two nine, uh, adopting the twenty two fee schedule, so, any questions on that?
I just wanna know if it's legal for us to take a deposit for. Signs that have constitutionally protected free speech on them, it seems a little. Doesn't seem like we can do that.
We'll call it garbage fee.
Well, I, don't get me wrong, I was on record as saying, I don't put a political, I think yard signs are trash in the streets, so don't get me wrong there, but what I guess what I'm getting at is.
We'll look into it, we'll find out.
Can we do that?
As an ordinance, you know.
We have legal here, but I don't know either, yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna put her on the spot right now, we'll look into it and find out.
Ask the W C or somebody.
No, we'll find out.
Well, there was, I mean, there's this Supreme Court case about regulating temporary signs. And and not saying political signs, I think we do call out in our code, because the the court case was about. It becomes cities regulating the speech instead of just the sign, so if it's agnostic, it's just temporary signs or temporary signs. That's one thing, but if you say political signs, then you get into that, and so.
Great point.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, because I think there is some stuff in our code about political signs, and we need to adjust that, because I think that's unconstitutional.
Free speech.
Uh, well, I mean, it, but a sign, well, I mean, just because it says political, it doesn't say anything about what the political sign says.
Our legals on on the line here too, she's.
Any, any, yeah.
There we go.
Sign code regulations are very hot button issue right now, um, something I worked very closely with Lucy on. Um, over the past several years, since the uh the Supreme Court case you're discussing, Town of Gilbert. Um, and so Lucy and I discussed that we just weren't enforcing parts of the code. Um, that were would likely be found unconstitutional under the Supreme Court's holding. Um, and we're working on a overhaul of the sign code, um, but as you can imagine. Uh, it's a large project, um, with an ever changing kind of case law climate. Um, so for smaller jurisdictions, I'm finding that they're kind of waiting to do a formal update until. Um, we have a clear path forward. Uh, so again, we're just not enforcing a lot of the provisions that might be found unconstitutional.
That's okay, thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
Are we gonna uh, let's move the second, are we gonna have any more questions on this? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Our resolution uh. Uh, twenty twenty one dash zero twenty nine is adopted. And next, we're gonna uh look at the uh, the lease with the Kittenside County Sheriff's Office, Rob?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council, so this is a, an ongoing uh project, if you remember back uh when we uh. Uh, divided uh the property out at the uh airport uh to to take off five acres, and then we uh, we did that, and then we uh. Um, traded that uh with the uh, with for the new city shop, right? And and so all that's been really exciting. Um, intent uh for the five acres, I think we all said, is is so that the sheriff can use that um. As a search and rescue uh main office out there, so, in the meantime. Uh, they need a place up here to store all their equipment, uh, and for at least two years, so that uh. They'll have time to construct or build whatever they need out there at our at our old uh five acres by the airport. So, in the meantime, uh, we offered up uh our old city shop. Um, and for two years, starting January one, um, so. Uh, lease is all here, uh twenty five hundred dollars a month. Um, and uh, it's for not only the the actual building, but for the the grounds as well. Um, and you you can see in here that we do have uh access to it twenty four hours a day, since we do have some I T equipment up there. Um, so, I would uh recommend uh you to authorize the mayor to sign the lease, any questions?
Uh, Stephen, Parker? Yeah, you did, you did highlight that we have I T assets in there, um, without revealing the nature of their inner connectivity to the. Um, city, my concern is that the assets are secured in such a way that they don't become a point of physical connection to our network. And so, uh, what what safeguards do we have in place? Uh, even more than just a physical lock on the on the thing, uh, we need to make sure. That, and you know, that another third party, maybe a vendor to the county, doesn't become a, you know, malicious actor.
Okay, I I I would agree with that, yeah, um. Um, obviously, we can lock ports down in our, on our switch there. Uh, there is, oh, obviously, one switch that they could un, they, I guess they could unplug it, so we'll have to get a physical lock, I think, uh. Like we have in the other two locations.
I guess my my concern is we, we paid for it, we we paid to make the infrastructure. My understanding is we have a fiber line out there, correct?
Right, that that's basically all it it is, it's a fiber line to that uh that uh shop, the old shop. And then we, because we don't have a fiber line to this, the new city shop. We have to beam over the the, that that's what's there, which is a connection.
We have physical security of everything, um, so that I'm not worried about the county tampering with our. I T infrastructure, I'm worried about third parties having potential access, and we're not the curators of that, do we? Do we open ourselves up to a line, and I don't see specific verbiage that um, that, you know, ensures that they're the. Uh, the responsible party in the event of a security breach.
I so.
They hold us harmless, which is nice, but we need to be able, uh, and with the. The the L C hereby agrees to then indemnifying whole harmless the list, the the. The lesser, um, but it doesn't, is it to, I guess to defend would help, is somewhat okay. But just some stronger language that specifically addresses in the event that they felt that. That they're not able to secure that, I don't know, I just.
Okay.
I know practically, yeah, we shut down the ports, make sure everything's good, um, but. If there was just some kind of language that was a little bit stronger, I don't know, maybe Alex has, uh, maybe she feels. Happy that this is enough to protect us from liability, I'm not worried about actual intrusion.
I said.
You're good with that, it's more of the legal liability.
It's the legal liability, okay. Um, I can review it again with with Alex, and we might have a slight change, uh.
Yeah, about the balance of the lease, so I guess I would motion that we uh. That we, that we authorize the mayor to sign this lease, depending uh any edits that uh. That our legal counsel might have to it, and take a second.
Sorry. Move the seconded, authorize the mayor to sign the lease with the Kittenside County Sheriff's Office. With provision that edits can be made by our legal staff.
If they do, that's.
Maybe necessary. Questions on the motion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very none, the lease will be signed. Okay, next, uh. Oh, this is, uh, here we go, uh, this is ordinance sixteen twenty four. The budget amendment, Rob is gonna stand in for Robin on this one here.
Right, so um. This could be the last meeting of the of the year, and so we wanna make sure that uh all of our accounting is in order before the end of the year. Um, so, we've been having some some uh pretty high bills come in um. In the city heights, medi- mediation arbitration area, um, and so we felt that we needed to uh. To up up our legal services a hundred thousand, um, and basically, we're taking that from the tax, the sales tax revenue, which has come in quite a bit. Over what we expected. Um, so that's the one, one thing, and then the second, second item was the uh, the sewer main repair. Uh, two hundred thousand, uh, that that it it's actually could be more than that, but we have a a cup. An extra couple hundred thousand budgeted in the sewer, um, for the sewer plan that we haven't used, so. This will bring us up to four hundred thousand if it if we need to, and we're taking the, at least the two hundred thousand. Uh, out of REIT one. Questions?
Where's, oh, hang on, uh, Jeff, go ahead.
I only see um, on this uh ordinance sixteen twenty four, eighty thousand dollars. Into sales tax revenue and eighty thousand into legal services for city heights arbitration. I don't see two hundred thousand that you mentioned for sewer.
Are you looking at?
Oh.
This one.
I don't, I don't have it either.
Sixteen twenty four, is it?
The electronic packet doesn't have that.
Ouch. Ouch. Here, yeah, here, just, you just take.
Crushed, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it says two thousand.
Yeah, now it says that.
Oh, I see a hundred thousand percent, yes, quite different, okay.
Yes, well, it was, it was gonna be eighty thousand, and then we got another bill, so we said, no, we better go, we better go to a hundred thousand. Uh, so, um, yeah, I don't know, sorry about that.
Can you guys send me electronic copy of the records?
Yeah. Did you, did you?
Can we?
Could you, just so we have it? Oh, the corrected electronic version.
I file electronic.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
I move that we uh pass ordinance sixteen eighty four as presented in the paper packets.
Sixteen twenty.
Sixteen twenty four, sorry.
Second.
Move the seconded to uh doc ordinance number sixteen twenty four, that amends the twenty twenty one budget. Uh, the city. Uh, questions on the motion? Are none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Oh, okay, those opposed? Very none, ordinance number sixteen twenty four was passed.
Orders like to make a statement that uh, we had, we have had a lot of public input. Uh, you know, from the affected uh citizens in that area.
Yeah.
And um, we have our council and staff. Um, but for many of those concerns, and it does come at a price, and that is money. And so that is uh, that is why.
Yes, okay. Okay, uh. May reports.
You told the committee in the meeting.
I don't know, at least it's only twelve on the agenda.
I can make a motion.
Do we? Sorry. I'm stuck in there. Wait, can, don't we need to formally cancel the second meeting of the month? As a body, if we're gonna do that?
I think that's. Well, my my comment goes along those lines. Yeah, is that in light of the information that we have tonight and consideration, et cetera, I would uh. For that we could not cancel it, and then in the event that we don't have anything to move on, the mayor can. So.
Maybe, okay, so he's basically motioning for lack of, that we keep it on schedule. Uh, perhaps there'll be uh information and uh.
If there just happens to be a lack of quorum or a lack of agenda.
Well, we can, we can cancel the meeting easy enough, but it's still on there if if we get sufficient materials to review.
I'm like going into the hill.
It's all right, let's, let's leave all of, all of possibilities, all right?
This one.
Go ahead, sir.
We have not set up a second meeting for the proposal procedure manual.
So, and my my proposal. So my my proposal on that is we do it when we have our new council people on board. And we do it as a as a group and then they can study and digest and move on.
I diametrically opposed to that, and I would seek that anybody on council please voice up, having a meeting earlier than the end of the year. This council started its proceedings and this council should end it's end the proceedings of that. Uh, and if it takes us a couple nights.
I am in agreement with that, but I don't know that there's. I think, I think the point is they will, but we should be finished for our review of the document ahead of that, since we started that review.
Yeah, maybe if it's just to finish the review and remand it to the next council for a vote. It just restarted it, we should finish it.
Well. I, yeah, okay, that's what you think, we should finish it, we will finish.
Now, altered version of this body will finish it.
Can I, Mr. Mayor, one more thing?
Yes.
I I would just like to acknowledge Councilmember Holes. This may be his last meeting, and I I just wanna thank him for his service to the city.
Only in a few years.
How many decades?
Along those lines, we are thinking for. Plus, we've already brought some energy to this council. He certainly did. If anybody was looking after this town, he'd be the one to bring it up. He is down-to-earth guy, and I really appreciate his presence. All right. Motion to adjourn. Why make one earlier?